Good evening. I'd like to call this city council meeting to order. I think our mayor will be joining us shortly. Do I have sound here? Okay. The mayor should be here shortly, but in the entrance of time, we're going to go ahead and get going. We'd like to open with an invocation, and I'd like to offer it, please. By your heads. Heavenly Father, thank you for all your blessings on our beautiful city of Brookhaven. Please guide us in all of our council work. Please give us foresight and understanding in our decisions, and most of all, grant us wisdom. And on this eve of 9/11, I pray that you protect our country, you bless our community, and we remember those who lost their lives on 9/11, and all of those who have died defending our freedom, home and abroad, and those who stand in harm's way every day. God bless Brookhaven, and God bless the United States. Amen. Mr. Schultes, could you call the roll?
Councilman Jim Iyer, District 2.
Present.
Councilman Bates-Madison, District 3.
Present.
Councilman Joe Gebbia, District 4.
Present.
Mayor Protem, Rebecca Williams.
Present.
Mayor J. Max Davis is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation, a republic, and a municipal, with the liberty and justice
Mrs. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we agenda the amenda.
(laughing).
Reverse that.
Let's try that again.
Amend the agenda.
Wow.
Good. Glad we have a good crowd for that one. To move items E, F, and G prior to the public hearing.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion having passed, we've amended the agenda. So we will hear some opening remarks to start. I want to remind everybody that we will have our second food truck roundup tomorrow night. It will be every Wednesday now through September and October from 5 till 9. It's going to be an especially nice truck roundup tomorrow night. We're going to have a 9/11 commemoration at 6 o'clock led by our Chief of Police, Gary Endura, and the Cross Keys Color Guard will be there. We're thrilled to have them. We've added even more trucks because if you were there last week, you know it was a huge crowd, although people didn't seem to mind standing in line to eat at the Happy Belly and some other great food trucks. So come on out. It's at Blackburn Park, right on Ashford Dunwoodie Road, right across from Cambridge Square there. We're asking people to park closer to where the big picnic pavilion is, and sort of, we know that traffic is kind of a challenge at that time anyway, so we're just trying to keep the cycle of cars moving. But there should be plenty of parking, and it was just great fun, and it was a beautiful night, and I hope you can join us tomorrow night and in the coming weeks. It's been a great event. And I want to thank our team of Megan and Dana who have pulled all this together, and the rest of our city team, Brad, who worked like crazy to keep it all cleaned up and make sure there were portstones and other essentials there. There are some tables, and so that's nice. So bring the kids. Dogs are welcome, too, I guess. I certainly saw plenty of them, so it's quite a fun fest. One other event we've got coming up, I want you to mark your calendar, is that on September 19th, we are having a town hall meeting, and it will be at 7 o'clock at Oglethorpe University. So it's a good chance to just come, catch up on city news, ask your questions, meet some more of our staff and our police officers, and just be involved. We love to hear from you. We love your feedback. We love to hear what your questions are. Do you have something to say?
All of you should have received the Brookhaven City News Blast, current events, things that are happening in the city. This is going to go on on a regular basis. We're sending them out periodically in the mail. We're sending them out more often by email. If you want to sign up for the email blast, which goes out every week or two, every two weeks, BrookhavenGA.gov, there's a place to sign up there. You can just email address, and you'll get news and reports from the city on a regular basis, also other updates and things that come through. It's a way we're trying to build our email list so that we can keep you all updated on what's going on in the city. And if you're interested, please go to the website and sign up there. Thank you.
Did you all have something? Any other announcements?
Just if you want to explain what's going to go in the public comment?
I just, did you have any other district announcements?
No, I just checked the weather forecast. It's going to be nice tomorrow.
Excellent. Excellent. I wanted to let you know that I suspect some of you are here for some zoning matters that are on our agenda. The RZ-13-01 and the RZ-13-06, that's both the Druid Hills property and the one on Roxboro. We are going to defer both of those. Staff need some time to sort out some issues, get back with the developers, so we are not going to, we are not going to have a public hearing on those tonight. What we would like you to do, because we don't want you to, okay, we don't want you to waste your time having been here, and if you can't come back, we're going to defer them two weeks, is that correct?
Yeah.
Two weeks from tonight at our next council meeting on the 24th? September 24th. So, but we do have a public comment period, so we welcome you to come up to the microphone and let us, we always want to hear from our citizens. But I will tell you that there's an updated site plan on the Druid Hills one, and we're still working with the developer over some setback issues, so that may in fact turn out to be a different site plan as well. But like I say, we welcome your comments. We'd love to hear from you, but just know that we're not going to have a full-blown public hearing until we actually get the final site plans from the developers. One thing I meant to note that has been new is our logo. I hope you all saw this. We unveiled it a week ago, two weeks ago, okay? And we're pretty happy with it. It kind of incorporates the brook running through Brookhaven, and I like to think of the buildings as sort of the haven part of Brookhaven, but our beautiful homes and residential areas and our vibrant business centers, and it's all green, and both making money green and environmentally sound green. So we thought it incorporated a lot of elements of what Brookhaven is and what it aspires to be. So, is that, does anybody have any more announcements? All right, so with that, we are now down to agenda announcements. Do we have any changes in the agenda?
Yes, ma'am. I would ask that the council please consider amending the agenda under New Business, which would become item number three, to grant the authority to the mayor to execute a resolution for purposes of the creation of a fire marshal for the city of Brookhaven and to provide detailed description of what the duties of that fire marshal will be.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I move we amend the agenda to add New Business, item three, consideration, discussion of the items necessary to create a fire marshal and also provide the mayor authority to sign any documents at such time they're available.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, motion having passed. We'll take up that third under L, number three will be a new item. This is actually a very exciting item, and we'll explain more about it. This is really good news for our community and especially our building community.
Mrs. Mayor, I move that we amend the agenda to move items 1 and 2 of Section K, Old Business, to precede the public, actually to follow the public hearing, Section D.
Seconded.
Is there a discussion? Can I explain? There seems to be a lot of (inaudible). The idea is that we want to be expedient with addressing the public concerns here, so we want to address the deferral issues so that citizens who are here can have a chance to see us defer the zoning ordinances and the public hearing, and then have a chance to have a public comment.
So is that a motion?
Yep.
There's a motion, and seconded.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we're moving those up to right after the, what will really be the public comment section.
Yeah, my motion was meant to move the public hearing and items 1 and 2 of K, Old Business, prior to the public comment, so that we could go ahead and defer the issues and then allow the public to speak on it if they wanted to.
Okay. Is that what we did, Mr. Riley?
That's fine.
(laughing).
That was the intent of his motion. Is that the intent of yours?
That is.
All right.
I'm sorry for this scrambling of our agenda here, but really, what our goal is to be conscious of your time and try to move things along, even though it's on.
We learned this from the last time that we did this, that you folks were here longer than you needed to be, so we're trying to make this, trying to expedite it for your benefit.
Mrs. Mayor, I move that we defer the public hearings, items 1 and 2.
Well, we hadn't had a vote on moving the others first. You have to call for the vote on those, didn't we? I thought we did. Pardon me.
So, I'd like to, no, I've lost my place.
Now I've got time around you.
Mrs. Mayor, I'd like to move that we defer the public hearing, items 1 and 2, until the September 24th council date.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so move.
Comments? This does not preclude the ability to make a comment during comment time.
Right. And again, there will be a full public hearing on both of these developments in two weeks when we have this updated site plan so that we can talk about something that's really on the table in front of us. But again, as Joe just said, we welcome your comments tonight, in general, on, you know, on both of these plans. So with that...
Mrs. Mayor, I'd like to make another motion.
All right. You're on a roll, Bates.
I move that we defer items K, 1 and 2, rezoning ordinance ID 1098 and rezoning ordinance ID 1124 to the city council meeting on September 24th.
I second.
Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so passed. Okay, so...
Any more motions, Bates?
All right, so let's move to the public comment phase. I'd like to open the public comment, and again, we'd be happy to hear from you if you came specifically to talk about either of these developments, or we welcome you to say whatever's on your mind. Daniel, do you have any comment cards?
Yes, ma'am, I have one from Ronnie Mayer.
It just wouldn't be a council meeting without Ronnie Mayer.
And just as a reminder for everybody, what we do during comment time is we only take comments. We're not permitted by law to interact with you with questions back or answer questions. That's what a public hearing would be, so feel free to give us your comments, and I'm sure anybody else in the audience that you're hoping will hear them. Ronnie?
Welcome, Mr. Mayor, from Mr. Mayor. It's kind of funny listening.
I can't interact with, thank you. This was at my son's football game, so.
Great. Did you win? Good.
Lost in the last second.
Well, what I love about being here, they go, Ms. Mayor. That's scary because Ms. Mayor's at home selling houses, and they keep saying, "Ms. Mayor," and I went, "She's at home?" I've got maybe four small things. We've had conversations over the last few months on sanitation gig. I brought it up that DeKalb Sanitation has a mowing division. I found one of the guy's cars. I called head of sanitation. The big Peach Running Company last week had a big fundraiser. I had them cut the grass all down Peach Street, cut, weeded it, blow it, clean it, so when you drive down Peach, you look at it clean, know your outside citizen here made that phone call.
Looks really good, Ronnie.
Number two, the question, and I got, I got to go through these quick because they owe me pretty quick. Now that we own all our parks, and if we decide to put the Brookhaven Library at the park, what kind of a land deal do we need to do with DeKalb to carve out that little square hole? I'd like that to be, you know, sort of preempt the work on it so it doesn't really take another year for us as a whole to create that deal when hopefully we decide to put the Brookhaven Park where the, as I call, the dog park, right there. So I don't know what all we have to do legally to carve out that little piece back to do the library, but I'd like to be proactive into that. Number three, I love your truck rodeo, kind of gets me because that was my idea to do it over at the dog park for a fundraiser, but hey, you got it over there and it's running beautiful and everybody loves it. That's what it's all about, Brookhaven. I want to know how long it's going to be. Remember, we've got to run the city like a business. How long is it going to be? I don't know if I asked the chief or the attorneys. We haven't wrote any tickets yet with the speed gun yet, and when DeKalb County was shooting on Peach Street next to Starbucks, they were writing 30 to 40 tickets a day, a day. So if we start doing that, we wasting time and money because you wasting 30 tickets a day in revenue that we could hire another 15 to 20 more officers because I've been talking to the officers, and they're great guys and girls, but they're very, very busy, and I think we need another 15 officers because even a few of them said that they didn't think Beaufort Highway was really what it is, and now they're discovering, it is what everybody said it was. So if we can try to get this process with the tickets, let's run it like a business and not necessarily write the citizens of Brookhaven on the small streets, but down on Peach Street Road, they come into Brookhaven at 68 miles an hour in a 35. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mayor, I kind of like that.
Hey, Bill, is it constitutional to write tickets to non-citizens as opposed to citizens at the expense of citizens? Just want to make sure we can't, we can't take up that suggestion.
Marie, has the city put in for validation for radar?
Yes, we have. We're certifying our streets.
We're waiting for certification before that goes into effect.
Correct.
But we've already put that in process. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hopper, the lines?
Good evening, Mayor, as members of the council. I want to tell you first that we appreciate the invite to submit something to you that would be in the way of an ordinance that would protect the city and protect the pony, and we're working on that, but with four lawyers working on it, we've got about six different ordinance suggestions right now, but we'll have something for you. We want to resolve this, hopefully as badly as you do. But I want to tell you something, and I brought some documents to give you tonight. Something has gotten lost in the struggle between the city council and mayor of Brookhaven and the Pink Pony, and that is the truth. And I want to tell you what the truth is. I want to tell you what is around the Pink Pony since we located there, and that is the Microtail, right across the street, the Hampton Inn, the CVS, the Wells Fargo Bank, Zuffee's. Recently Lips has gone into business, a new McDonald's just came in. There's a Pro Movers that came in after we were there. There's a Lenox Apartments that came in after we were there, and of course, the Municipal Court of Brookhaven and some of the city offices, which we all welcome. We don't think that you were negative secondary effects that were brought in by us either. None of those things are negative secondary effects. You might be able to go to Seattle and Austin and find all kinds of secondary effects. That's the secondary effects that the Pink Pony has brought in around us. That's what surrounds us that has come in after we located. I forgot one thing. A 600-foot chapel by the Salvation Army has come in, right next to us. We use all these facilities. Our patrons, the people who work there, go to the CVS, they go to Zuffee's, they're probably going to end up in the Municipal Court sometime as well, and they go to all these business establishments, and we probably had some of them at the Salvation Army. As I said, something has gotten lost here, and that's the truth. You want to find out what the impact, the community and the economic impact, just walk around the area of the pony and see what you see. You'll see the new establishments. You want to find out what's going in Austin or in Indianapolis, go there. But if you want the truth, if you do want the truth, look at what's going around the pony. It's positive. Thank you very much, and I want to leave these documents with you, which are simply a brief summary of some of the things that have opened up. Not everything is around there, but just some of the positive things. Thank you very much. I'm going to go home and watch the World Cup soccer qualifications.
Next.
I have no more cards at this time.
If there are no more cars, you know, if you want to speak on anything that's on the agenda that might be deferred or whatnot, now's the time to come speak on it. So if you have any issues about anything you want to talk about, whether it's a rezoning or a development or anything, please come on up. You got one more?
Any folks that have come here now for the rezoning part of this, if you want to take the opportunity to make a comment, please, we encourage you to come up and do it.
Sir, I've lived in this area on and off since '74, and I still have property in the area. About five years ago, DeKalb County did a park that y'all seem to have forgotten about completely, and so did they. It wasn't on your first list of parks, and that's Fernwood. They put a bridge across it midway so people could walk up, walk across from one side to the other without getting their feet muddy. They cut all the trash down, cleaned the trash out. It was a fairly neat little park there. Now then, it's a place for mosquitoes to breed, which is rather shameful because in five years, it went from a nice little hill park to a mosquito haven. I don't know if y'all got it on your list again, or if you forgot it again, but it is a nisour, to say the least. It's not a big park. It's a very small park. It's in back of the library. Martin uses part of it for overflow from their parking lots, and after that, everybody forgets about it. There's dead trees in there, fallen trees. It's a mess. That's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Marie, I think this is the park that I was mentioning earlier in the work session where there's the library and then two Martin parcels, and then the, it's Fernwood Park. I think there's even a sign there, too. It's been there. It's off Sylvan, I think it's on.
Sylvan and Fernwood.
Right, so.
Can you identify yourself, sir, on the mic for the record? Your name and address?
Jimmy's Bean. Property I'm referring to is 1353 Sylvan Circle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Marie, didn't we discuss including this in our GIS map survey?
Yes, absolutely.
Presentation to the cab for claim?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I can tell, I can tell the council I've broken a lot of trees down in that park. Pulled my back out many times working in that park. It's a very valuable park to me, and I've seen a vision of a citizen that has drawn up some amazing plans for that park in particular, so stay tuned. I think we're going to do great things with our parks.
All right. Anybody want to talk about the rezoning on Druid Hills or on Wright's, Wright Avenue? All right, if not, no other public comment? Brad? All right, the public hearing is, the public comment section is closed. After the opening remarks. If y'all want to stick around here, this is kind of big news, folks, or not. The, myself, the mayor, and the council have started off from the very beginning with an eye towards making sure that Brookhaven is efficient, saves money, and spends its money wisely, and that philosophy is being carried out by our city manager and our staff so that we can report to you tonight that within nine months of operation of the city of Brookhaven, with taxpayers reporting tax cuts, the city of Brookhaven has a $1 million reserve. So part of being financially responsible is making sure you have funds for a rainy day, and we look forward to growing that fund, also look forward to, if we can, refunding some money back to the taxpayers at some point. So it's big news. Thank you, thank you. So that comes from your council, it comes from me, it comes from our city manager. We all on the same page when it comes to making sure that Brookhaven is physically responsible. I'm proud of the council for the different ways that they approach this, with the different tactics, different questions, different experiences in life, and I think it's important that we have that diverse opinion, but the goal is still all the same, and I appreciate, I want to tell you I appreciate all y'all's hard work, Jim, Rebecca, Bates, and Joe, because it's a testament to the efforts that you've put in as well, and to Marie, and to the department heads, Bonnie, everybody, because I know you've made that your purpose. You've saved us a lot of money on a lot of these contracts. I mean, we appreciate that, and we look forward to saving even more. So, thank you very much. And so Melissa makes you want, you need to make a little article about that because that's important, the big news. All right. Anybody else have any remarks about that? Anybody want to say anything?
It's on our agenda.
I think we have the opportunity when we vote.
All right.
Consent agenda.
Oh, agenda announcements. So we've already done the agenda amendments. Consent agenda, well, we have, we've already done public comment. Again, all right, consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you have three items on the consent agenda. The first two are minutes from the August 27th council work session as well as the regular city council meeting. The third item is an approval for the Brookhaven Bank to be the designated bank for the financing of our police vehicles.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the consent agenda, items 1, 2, and 3.
For second. Discussion?
I just want to say how pleased I am that we're banking locally with the Brookhaven Bank, and after shopping around, our finance director told us that they gave us by far the best rate, and being a new city that doesn't have audited financials, it can be a little challenging, but I guess they figured they're, we're good for it, so I appreciate their goodwill and look forward to working with them.
I concur. All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, Daniel, put that in the record, please. Announcements, we have any announcements? Okay, any reports or presentations? No reports. Old business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Somebody keep me on track here because, you know, I know y'all have...
We've deferred these first two items.
Okay, so we need to defer three, I mean, 3 and 4 are next.
Correct. Items number 3 and 4 are both of the same property. One is the rezoning ordinance of RZ-1305, and the other is ordinance annexation 13-01, both of the Century Center property located in land lots 195, 196, 201, 203, and 204, 18th District, DeKalb County, Georgia, approximately 100 acres, more or less. We would ask that you defer both of these... We would ask that you defer both of these cases.
Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that we defer rezoning ordinance ID number 1113, RZ 13-05, and ordinance ID number 1120, Addix 13-01, until the next scheduled council meeting, Marie?
Yes.
Nine, 9:24.
Correct.
Second. All right. Any discussion? All, all in favor of the deferrals signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the deferred. Daniel? New business?
Yes, new business, Mr. Mayor. Item number one is an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2013 for each fund of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia pursuant to Article 5, Section 5 of the Charter of the city, beginning January 1, 2013, and ending December 31, 2013, appropriating the amount shown in each budget as expenditures, adopting the item of anticipated funding sources prohibiting expenditures to exceed appropriations, and prohibiting expenditures from exceeding actual funding sources. We went over this in our work session, and there is some minor adjustments. The good news, which the mayor has already reported, is that we were able to secure and hold the, and create the establishment of a reserve fund of $1 million. Prior to this amendment, we've been operating off of a $16,465,000 budget, and we are proposing with the slight adjustments that the budget, amended budget be $15,836,690. We ask for your approval.
I move we approve ordinance ID 1142, and ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2013 for each fund of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia, subject to the modifications that we discussed regarding the funding for the police vehicles.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I just want to congratulate Marie and our finance director, Bonnie, as you've said before, just doing a great job. I think if you go down and look at each department, you'll see by and large that there, there's some cost savings there. So I think you've, you've done well with your sharp pencil.
Thank you.
And I also want to say there's some other really good news when you look at the revenue side, that we are indeed having a building boom, and the amount that we're getting for building permits is estimated to be at some $700,000 more than, than we anticipated. The hotel motel tax is robust, and the alcohol beverage excise tax is just doing great. So I guess Brookhaven is both a good place to come stay, have, have a good time, and built.
Exactly. Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that in that budget, we were able to include a, over half a million dollars for capital improvements for sidewalks, parks, and other things, and we hope to have a lot of those items either in the works or in place by the end of the year. So thank you, Marie, for, for finding those monies that I know if we can get them out into the community quickly, then we can make an impression before the, the end of the year with a couple of those items that I think people are looking for at this time.
The, the one budget you'll note that did increase is the parks and rec budget that went up by some $360,000. So I, I think we all know that's because we've taken over the parks sooner than we thought we would, and we know they need a lot of TLC right now and a lot of work. And so I'm, I'm thrilled that we were able to find the money to put into that budget so we can start, start seeing some changes in our parks immediately.
I'd also note that our legal expenses budget went down by $18,000.
Yes.
So that's kind of interesting news. An $18,000 less than we budgeted on legal expenses.
And I have a question. Is this budget on our website, on a, on a homepage, or is it just in the meeting agenda packets?
It would just be in the meeting agenda packets, but after tonight, should you move forward with approval, it will be posted.
I'd certainly like to see it posted on there. So I, I think it's a budget to be proud of, and this is the document that the mayor was alluding to, where we have a million dollars in reserves in our budget for this year, by the end of the year.
This, this is, do you have something you wanted to say, Mr. Mayor?
Jim, Bart.
Yeah, we'll go down the row once and then come back to you. This is not just good news, this is great news. It's the, it's the position of council to be policymakers, but you need to have micromanagement in order to have this work out correctly. I mean, it's at the micromanagement level where the details are taken care of, where we know we're dotting our i's, crossing our t's, and getting those savings where they need to be. And that's kudos to you, Marie. I mean, what you're doing, the city manager, is proving to be every bit what we expected and more, and Susan, and your staff. This is really, really great news for us as a new city, becoming in and doing everything that we're doing, to the degree that we're doing it at, and to still have a million-dollar reserve on a short-year budget. Guys, I think that's phenomenal.
It is.
Kudos.
I do want to, I do want to make sure that we have budget line on for next year to get some assistance from Marie, because the amount of time she's working, she emails at midnight and 5:00 AM, she needs, no one can keep that up forever.
I, I find out how to get around that. Just turn your phone off.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Maybe, Bill, you could draft a non-compete agreement for Marie that she might have signed that, five years or something like that.
If you'll just allow me to follow through on Mr. Madison's comment. I'll be looking forward to our 2014 budget where I can include that.
Marie, that nine, that a million dollars could have been 900,000. You blew it.
I promised you all we'd have a million, and you have a million.
You did. I, I think it, I think it's also important to note, and Chief, correct me if I'm, if I'm misstating, but I'm looking at the supplemental budget for the police, and we're adding crime scene techs, GCI, service reps, community policing teams, additional weapons, and crime scene vans, and a number of other things with this budget. So we are expanding the police force, a lot of support staff that will free up some of our officers to do the things that they're very good at, but also provide the backup that they need to come in after them and make sure that things are done properly and all the cleanup and, and the crime scene and investigative work is necessary to make sure we put away what they, what they catch. So thank you for, again, finding that, and it's almost a million, almost two million dollars worth of additional people and equipment for the police force that's included in this year's budget.
Is that speed radar box in this, too?
Yes.
It is. So we, we have some speed boxes coming, the ones that you sit on the side of the road that tell you how, yeah, the trailers that tell you how fast or slow you're going. And I think the ones that we're looking at, Chief, aren't they the ones that do traffic count as well? So that's a kind of two birds with one stone. They've come down in price, and so that's exciting.
We can see where the good pickings are.
Jim, 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 Jim.
But that's, that is really, it's, it's, I don't want to say it's a relief, but it's just, it's a feeling of satisfaction and accomplishment to be a part of a startup city that is able to do this in its first nine months. It's, it really is, and you're obviously a key part of that, Marie, and we really appreciate your work. I know you work a lot and you do lots of things, but this is the feather in your cap right now, so.
Thank you.
I'm sure there are more feathers to come. We'll turn it to a bird.
Thank you. Well, I have a very good team.
Well, yes, you do, yes.
To me, this budget is just a big sigh of relief, because as you know, when we were first passing this, we had a lot of unknowns and estimates and.
A lot of robo calls.
Yes, distractions, but now the numbers are, are filling in, and gosh, we've got our police department, and it's got a good budget, a good, healthy budget, and we've already, as just was pointed out, have even been able to give the chief some extra things that he felt like he needed now, not later. So I'm, I'm glad that we've been, been able to do that, and, and again, still end up with a million dollars in reserves. So I'm, I'm proud of all of you, proud of you, Marie, proud of Bonnie. Did Bonnie leave?
She wasn't feeling well.
Yeah.
All right. Any more kudos to give out? All right.
I will say one thing. I need the council members to, to get ready to roll up their sleeves, because our public works director probably already knows this, before he leaves tonight, I'll be telling him that we are going to get ready to put the proposal together for bids for the sidewalks. We have money in the sidewalk fund through host, and for each district, there will be a, a certain allotment, and we're hoping that we'll be able to connect many dots where there are missing pieces of sidewalks, and we hope that where district boundaries align, where there's an opportunity to extend a sidewalk and keep it going, we want to do that. So we'll be moving very quickly on that, because we would like to be able to announce where those sidewalks connections are going to be located, so the community can look forward to seeing the construction of those and to get that done right away this year.
Yeah, that's important, because, you know, each district is going to have, you know, new sidewalks, and not just repairing sidewalks, but new sidewalks. And it's kind of my job to kind of see if I can find places where we can connect districts or find, you know, look at the city as a whole. And so each of them, y'all, y'all have a task to do, and I'm sure you'll hear, hear from your constituents about where they would like to see some, but we'll see what we can do to try to help everybody out from this position.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Marie. Any more discussion? Bates, did you have something? Okay. All in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Budget amendment is passed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend Chapter 14 land development code of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia to replace Article 4 entitled Flood Plane Management and for Other Purposes. Mr. Meehan is here to present that.
Thank you. As we talked about in the work session, this is the Flood Plane Management Ordinance, which is required that we pass by FEMA in order for us to be certified as a community for their flood insurance program. And we, like we mentioned, this was originally passed under the, at the beginning of the city back in December, we passed the DeKalb County ordinance. This is updating that ordinance to be one for Brookhaven, and it also follows the model ordinance for the state of Georgia.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve ordinance ID 1141, ordinance to amend Chapter 14 land development of the code of the city of Brookhaven to replace Article 4 entitled Flood Plane Management and for Other Purposes.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of passing the ordinance signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. It's passed. Any other business?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is, we amended the agenda to add an item number three for the council to grant you authority to execute a resolution in order to establish the office of fire marshal for the city of Brookhaven.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Anybody get that down?
Yeah. I'll, I'll move that we give authority to the mayor to execute a resolution to provide for our own fire marshal, to be done in-house, and to provide a description of.
Duties.
Of duties.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just want to say, this is such welcome news. I, I had no idea this was such a problem, but apparently, what we've found is that it's a big hangup in many cases, where we can, we can put out permits as fast as we can, but if the fire marshal doesn't sign off on your building plans, you can't finish your, your building. And so we, we've already had, you know, send flares up to the, the fire marshal to, on, on things that really needed action immediately. So again, kudos to our city manager for finding a solution to this, I think in an extremely cost-effective way. We reached out to the state fire marshal and have found, can I say that we're working with Decatur? Did that work out?
Yes, that's already completed.
Okay. So we're going to have our own fire marshal in-house, available to review plans in a very timely and speedy fashion, and really not have to send everybody all the way over to Decatur to wait for their plans, which often get sometimes lost in the pile, and then we have to get on the phone with Chief O'Brien, who, by the way, has been extremely helpful and cooperative. It's not really his fault, it's just the way the system is set up over there. But I think we found a solution. I congratulate us for trying to be more business-friendly and, and being nimble and, and finding a solution. Thank you, Marie.
But I think we also need to make, make a point that this is for permitting only.
Correct.
That it's not our intent to, to begin to grow a, a fire department. We have found issues with the, the permitting process, and the fire marshal is, as, as Rebecca said, has always been sort of the, the slow, slowest one. So this allows us to contract. It, it's the step we need in order to contract with the city of Decatur to provide their services as a backup or as supplemental to what services DeKalb County is providing, which we're going to get fire services through DeKalb County as a result of our IGA, et cetera, et cetera. But this is just a, a way to, to help with the permitting review that we need for, for our drawings and the new construction that's happening in the city.
Megan, can you get a, if you're probably already working on one, but at least, so the business community understands that if you're, that this, the purpose of this is to help them expedite, once they get their permits from Brookhaven, they would, they can go to Brookhaven to get a fire marshal inspection as well, so that they know, just so we get that out there. I think it's important.
Have we set a goal for what we're looking for, for turnaround from time of submission of application to approval?
We're still working within the, the 10-day period for plan submittal to at least get comments back, if not a permit. And I'd just like to answer the question with just a little bit more of an explanation of the fire marshal. The fire marshal will be under the direction of the community development director, so the person will be housed in community development and will be part of the review team. As we start improving on the manpower and the workforce and identify critical needs in that department, we'll be able to get back with you with a, a better answer, and definitely the 10-day period is our benchmark right now. If we can improve upon that, we will do that, and we'll wait for Ms. Cannon to really review the logistics of, of getting all of that done. But the first thing that was most important was to get a fire marshal on board so that we could complete the circle of review and, and get those plans out and get permits issued, and, and then also be able to respond to the inspections that are coming in. So right now, it's a, a 10-day period, and that is being reviewed right now. She has a logistics team in the department now, looking at the process of how permits are submitted, how long they take, how the review is occurring, who gets it first, how long do they keep it, where does it go from there? So all of that's being analyzed, and I'll just ask you to please stay tuned, and, and we'll be able to report to you in the next few weeks with where we're going on that, and hopefully, very soon, we'll be introducing you to your new fire marshal.
I have two other points. This is a single individual, correct?
Correct.
Prior to this, we were dealing with DeKalb County.
Correct.
Right. And they had a team, but that team was dispersed over the entire DeKalb County, including the city of Brookhaven. So it's, it's your premise, and I'm in agreement, I hope this is true, that we will get better, faster service?
Yes, more responsive service, absolutely.
Number two is, some of the issues that came up with incidences regarding fire marshal was not only a problem of timeliness, but the criteria that was being put on some of these places as far as changing per visit. So I'm sure you're aware of some of these situations, and I'm hoping that we look to standardize our approach with predictability, so people know exactly what's to be expected, and we do the best we can to streamline this.
Absolutely, and that's why this position is going to be housed in the community development department under the direction of Ms. Cannon, and there is no better than operating the community development department than Ms. Cannon. So I can assure you and tell you, I hear it every day, how things are changing and what her intentions are to improve, and I'm very excited for what she has planned and what's in the works.
Excellent.
So it will be under the right director.
This is good news.
Yeah, to Joe's point, I think part of that consistency, there was a consistency problem, because some people are getting some criteria and some are getting other.
Exactly.
And so I think that was just the nature of having several people in an department, you know, one starting the inspection, one finishing it, one going back during the follow-up. So with one person, I think at least part of that problem will be taken care of, too.
The, the regulations, and this is my naivete on this, I'm sorry if I have to bring this up, but were they operating under a county guideline or a state guideline?
Well, the fire marshal, every fire marshal within every local government is really an agent of the state fire marshal.
Right.
So while they may be an employee of DeKalb County or the city of Alpharetta, wherever that might be, they are really serving on the toolage of, of the state fire marshal and the state fire codes. So they do operate there. Now, on top of that, there can also be other codes that the local jurisdiction requires.
Does that mean that we need to look at what our ordinances are for this?
We're going to look at all of that, and, and that, again, will be part of the whole process of not only what the permits are that you can seek from the city of Brookhaven, but exactly what the checklists are. I mean, that's part of the logistic team review, is we want to give predictability so that anybody that's interested in developing in the city, they will get a, a packet, and this is what you do if you want to get a permit of X, Y, or Z, and this is who the review team is, and this is the turnaround, and this is how you can track it. And there's even discussion on Ms. Cannon's part that, you know, the community will be able to key in, just like FedEx, you can track your package, track your permitting, where that is. So the community will be able to know and save a phone call so they don't have So the community will be able to know and save a phone call so they don't have to wait and have a return call. They can just go in and find out where they are in the process.
Excellent.
So lots of good things about to happen in that department, and I'm very excited about it.
This is the same individual that will be working with code enforcement for safety checks?
Absolutely. Will be a member of the team, of Ms. Cannon's team.
Just want to make sure we do one thing. Maybe Bill can get... Bill and Susan, is that Decatur's codes, you know, they might not line up exactly with what we've adopted. So we want to make sure that...
We'll look at that.
That the Decatur fellow that comes in or lady knows that, you know, we have this regulation, not this one, or vice versa.
Right, exactly. And the good thing, too, is we'll be able to seek counsel from that fire marshal on what improvements we need to make or what is superfluous and can be gotten rid of. We want to streamline it. We want to be sure people are safe, buildings are safe, and we want to be able to help people get what they want done, and that's to get a permit and get moving. One last thing, just to let you know how this affects and how this impacts our current intergovernmental agreement for fire protection with the county. The city attorney and I are going to be meeting tomorrow with the law department and with the fire chief to discuss specifically what we need to do to amend that IGA. So that will be coming back to you because inspections and plan review will no longer be a part of that. You know, they will...
Get a refund on that? On that portion of our fire line item?
Yeah.
It should be. I mean, they're...
Yeah, exactly. Yeah. It's permit-driven, so, right. But we'll be looking at...
So you pay a fee to the fire marshal?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And that fee will now come to the city. And we're going to look at the fees of the surrounding jurisdictions and of the county. We'll use the same benchmark that we did on establishing the fees here. We'll look to the county first, equal to or better than. That's what we'll do.
Have you looked at what's on the books and what's pending for transition and come up with a contingency? I'm sure you'll be coming up with a contingency plan to make sure that we transition through this with the councils that are now...
Oh, yes. Yeah, we need to capture who's in the process with the county right now. And depending on where they are, we may bring those over, or they may just continue completing those. I don't expect, you know, while all of the resolution will be ready for the mayor's signature sometime tomorrow, we'll have that meeting with the county tomorrow. I expect it'll be the first part of next week that our fire marshal will report. And we are working with his availability, and he is a vendor for us, a contractor. So we'll be working on that. But he'll be available to start reviewing plans right there in City Hall.
Lastly, and then I'm done, to suggest that if it stays with DeKalb County on the ones that are already permitted, if we come... If it's revealed to us that there is a problem...
Oh, yes.
I would definitely suggest we intercede at no cost, whatever it would take, and make sure that that business in Brookhaven gets taken care of, to the same degree it would be if it started with us.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And I know Ms. Cannon will do that without hesitation.
All right. Is there... All in favor of passing the ordinance? This is an ordinance, right? Not a resolution?
Resolution.
It's a resolution. Action item. Signify yourself by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And you put in the record that this resolution is passed. That was... Does that conclude other business?
It does.
All right. Public comment? Public comment section is open. Anybody want anything? Come to the podium if you want.
One more simple question. I just heard y'all say that you've added another million dollars to the chief's budget. Do you have a number of new officers that you're going to tell that you're going to hire? You got like six, 10? Do you have a figure of what y'all doing? Because I have folks every day calling me going, how many new officers we getting? Do y'all have a number on the chat, or you announced it or going to, or...
Marie, Chief, do you want to address that? It's...
While the chief's coming up, he's going to address the number of officers, but also our GCIIC as well.
Right. The budget includes four new officers. One of us will be supervised with three officers, and then an additional three to supplement the two GCIIC people that we currently have or are in the process of getting. And the GCIIC people will actually free up, as Councilman Ira said, a number of the officers and the jobs that they have to do.
So it's... The GCI folks aren't sworn officers, they're GCI employees?
They're civilian employees.
Okay. All right.
And they'll be actually working out of here for right now, 24 hours a day, working with the shifts. So they'll be able to take bonds, fines, answer phones. So when a resident calls up, they'll get a personal...
Okay.
A person to answer the phone.
So they'll be answering the phone 24/7?
Right.
Okay.
Was there other utilization of that money other than personnel?
Well, the vehicles and the equipment needed for the personnel.
Got you.
Thank you.
The other question that I had is so sad that all these other people just left because you were bragging on our great city manager. And it's sad that all those people left and didn't get to hear the story well. Number-one citizen, kudos. We love you. We want you to stay here forever. You're doing a jam-up job. The next kind of crazy question is just what we were just having to...
This isn't the public comment section that you can ask crazy questions.
No, no, no. No, this is pretty simple. The city of Atlanta and their fire ordinance with the food trucks caused for just a fire extinguisher. DeKalb County has in their rules and laws to have a Halon system in the truck. And at first, when I studied that, I said, you know, what the heck? But then the more and more I think about it, if we're having a food truck rodeo and there's a fire in one of those trucks and those guys are in that truck, I don't know if y'all have asked for permits in these trucks, but they need to have Halon systems in these trucks because there's all the gas bottles and oil and stuff. And if you've got 1,000 folks there and there's a truck fire, it won't be pretty. And when we have these large functions like this, we need to invite the closest fire station and ambulance just to be on standby in case there's an incident with a fire, a choking, a heart attack, anything. So just a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Megan, do you have anything to talk about when it comes to safety and fire, safety at our food truck events? Or fire trucks or ambulances being there possibly, or anything like that?
Well, all of our trucks are permitted through DeKalb and have that new fire suppression system. The defender we chose specifically for that reason so they meet those higher safety ratings. And we also have police officers who are trained in first aid and safety. We don't have an ambulance on standby, but we are sure we can get one.
Okay. If we need one, if Chief thinks we need one. All right. Thank you. Any more public comment? All right. Public comments are closed. Mayor's comments. Megan, Smash is having a ribbon-cutting win. The 17th of September, Smash, a new restaurant in town Brookhaven. It's a Tom Catherall Restaurant. It'll be his third one or fourth one in Brookhaven. Third one.
Second. The third one about to come.
A third one. Okay, second. So we have Noche, Smash, and Shucks. Is there another?
And Shucks is coming.
And Shucks, okay.
Raw Bar.
So that's 17th at 10:30 a.m., is that right? Oh, it's not open to public? Okay. There is now.
You know, it's a little side note. Smash was one of the restaurants that was kind of delayed by the fire marshal when we had to call on Chief O'Brien, who, thank goodness, interceded and got things moving. But we didn't want them delayed... Well, we didn't want anyone delayed. I mean, Mayor School was another one being delayed. So it... We were made well aware of how... What an important issue that was.
I'd also like to address something to Marie or to Bill because it is kind of disconcerting. When we have a meeting and 25 people get up during the middle of the meeting because their agenda item is over, is there not some way we can do a pause or something to where there's a time after... Do you have any idea how to kind of...
If you desire, and oftentimes this happens on major items, people know that everybody's going to leave, and you say you're just going to take a brief recess to let them clear the room and ask them to move out quietly as they can and give yourself two or three minutes.
All right. All right. Remind everybody tomorrow, again, to have several people come up to me and say, oh, I missed the first food truck event, but I'm not going to miss this one.